One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will you please call the rule?
Mr. Andrew Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Michael Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Furmanek?
Here.
Mr. Lass?
Here.
Mr. Rith?
Here.
Mr. Weix?
Here.
Ms. Whitkowski?
Here.
All eight here.
Thank you. And clerk, will you please read the common council meeting expectations?
The City of Merrill respects the role of our elected officials. Elder persons and department heads are committed to working in collaboration to provide our citizens with the best decision-making for our city's future. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation of all in attendance.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation honoring the Chamber of Commerce for the Chamber Commerce Month. City Attorney Hayden, will you please read that?
This is a 2024 mayoral proclamation, Chamber of Commerce Month, whereas there are 235 local members of the Merrill Chamber of Commerce, whereas chambers of commerce provide a wide variety of services to their members and community in advocacy, education, and economic development to promote entrepreneurism, tourism, and to solve economic challenges; and whereas the chambers of commerce are critical community partners and problem solvers with a unique ability to work with stakeholders from both private and public sectors; and whereas September is recognized annually as Chamber of Commerce Month in the hopes of encouraging chambers of commerce statewide to spotlight their work and facilitate greater community connection; whereas this month, the City of Merrill commands the local chamber of commerce, which works hard to make the city a better place to live, work, and play. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Steve J. Haas, hereby declare September 24 as Merrill Chamber of Commerce Month, proclaimed this tenth day of September 2024 by Mayor of the City of Merrill, Steve J. Haas.
Thank you. And thank you to the chamber for all the hard work that you guys do. City appreciates it, and I know a lot of the businesses do that are members. Thank you. Next, we have public comment.
Good evening. My name is Clyde Nelson. I'm the executive director of the chamber, and as all of you know today, right now, this is September is Chamber of Commerce Month. One of the things, one of the things that we've come up with at the chamber is to support our local businesses in a loyal-to-local campaign. So I'm going to challenge each and every one of you to go out and pick up one of these hard copy, which says loyal-to-local, and get your picture taken at any of the businesses around town, or whatever the case may be, and then send it to us at info@merrillchamber.org. We will then post it on our website and on our Facebook page. So the more, the more pictures we have, the better it's going to be for local, loyal-to-local. So I have a number of ones, number of items here. I'm sure that coming council members would each like one, wouldn't they? Isn't it? Yeah. I'll make sure I hand, I'll hand them out, okay, Mr. Mayor? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Last call for public comment. We'll move on to minutes from the previous meeting.
Consider placing the minutes from the August 14 meeting on file.
Motion to place the minutes on file?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to place the minutes from the August 14 meeting on file. Any discussion?
Ladonna just pointed out, I don't think they're actually in here.
Are they in the packet?
Didn't I put them in there?
Well, we can't approve that.
All right, rookie mistake.
I'll resend my-
They're in there in October.
I'll resend my motion, then.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you.
There are 27 pages. I thought for sure they'd be in there.
Next, we'll move on to revenue and expense report.
Discuss and consider the August revenue and expense report.
Make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the revenue and expense report for August. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have general agenda items for consideration.
One moment, please.
Employee recognition. Paul Peterson, the fire department, for 10 years. Tammy, is it Marachek?
Marachek.
Okay. Enrichment Center Director, 10 years, and Jason Hendricks, from the fire department, 15 years.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have discuss revisions to the 2024 financing plan related to TID 7, 8, 9, and 10, and with authorization to proceed, Finance Director Lee and Brian Riley from Ellers. Brian, you want to come up to the podium and-
Sure. Yeah, just to get things started, I have a report in the packet sort of explaining why we need to make some revisions to the plan that we adopted on June 11. And Brian can jump into more detail here, but it really is just a reflection of the new values that we have from the Department of Revenue. So we made a plan based on our 2023 information. When we got the 2024 numbers, we really needed to revise the plan a little bit.
Accurate summary, of course. I believe I was here back in June, and we talked about a number of things and looked for authorization to proceed. Some of that remains unchanged, but in light of the changes in the TID values, we wanted to come back to the council, discuss what we're seeing, and then we've created, I guess what I'll call an action plan around that. I thought Emily's memo was well laid out and described, I thought, in good detail what's kind of going on with the TIDS and the expectation that some of that would likely reverse in the next period, but only time will tell in that regard. And so we knew that as we were moving forward, the values would come out in August. They always do, and they're made final August 15. And so we were a bit surprised to see some of the degradations in value. The handout that I prepared and the memo that Emily prepared show the same numbers in terms of what that looks like. And so if you recall back to that prior discussion, we were relying on a number of districts to act as donors, including TID 3 and 4, to provide support primarily to TID 8 and 9. We can still accomplish that, and that is part of the overall plan, and would expect to come back in October with some action items for that agenda related specifically to the TIDS. But in and of itself, I think we felt compelled to recast some of the numbers. There's some changes, and it's a bit of a mixed bag. There's some positive and some challenge, but I think the challenges can be worked through, and so wanted to describe that in detail. If you want to go through the individual TID cash flows, again, we can do that, but if you say, save me from that, I'm happy to do that. Just suffice it to say that, you know, we've kind of left nothing unturned here and made sure that we're putting the city in the best position possible, understanding that all these projects have already essentially been spoken for, right? We've got last year's 2023 projects that some of this is reimbursement. You've also got 24 capital projects. We're getting to the end of the fiscal year. So this is money that's already been spent that needs to be financed, and then we're also dealing with the 2022 note anticipation note that was specifically issued as interim financing and does mature on November 1. So we're still within that, the timeline is still fine in that regard, but we want to walk away from this, knowing that we have the consent of the council to execute on what's been set out essentially in writing for all of you. So the first page of what we prepared basically mirrors Emily's memo in terms of the changes in the TID values, all right? And so as you go through, you can see some of them are dramatic. 3 and 4, you're talking 50 to almost two-thirds percent declines in value. Some are less pronounced, and in fact, TID 10 and 11 had some strong growth, and so we're relying on that to some degree. And then, again, some of these districts are looked at as potential donors to some of the others, and again, I'm pointing to TID 8 and 9, as they will require some level of support as we go forward. The next two pages really juxtapose what the original plan was when we discussed things with the council back in June to what it's going to look like now. And so I'll just walk you through a few things. First and foremost, we did talk about and adopt a resolution authorizing proceeding with an issue of general obligation promissory notes in the estimated amount of about $3.2 million. That remains unchanged. That is really general fund projects. So we've got capital financing for general fund projects, essentially quote-unquote "new money," even though some of that is reimbursement of about $1,007,400. There was a portion of the 2022 note anticipation note that also funded general fund projects. We need to put that into permanent financing and into an amortizing structure versus the interest-only structure of the interim note. And then, TID 11, fine shape. There was a small part of the 2022 note that was TID 11-oriented, and there's some new money as well in there, and none of that changes in this, in this regard. And just to go back to what we discussed at that point in time, we're looking to negotiate the sale of that issue with a pre-selected underwriter. I had kind of spoken about the fact that we've gone out to competitive sale for those sorts of obligations in the past and that we would pivot this go-around because of the current credit rating, and also to get some feedback from an underwriter who is dealing with all of the investors, so they can kind of tell us in real time what some decisions mean in terms of pricing of those obligations. When I say pricing, I mean the interest rates attached to them. We actually got proposals back today from two firms, and both of them are highly qualified, and we're going to work our way through that. If you recall, the council empowered the city administrator, finance director, and the mayor to make that selection, and I think we'd be able to do that by the end of the week. The documentation is basically all done, and it's going to be put in the hands of the underwriter, and then we'll work with them on an overall plan to sell those notes in the very near future and price them. And so more to come on that, but we're in fine shape there. Nothing changes. As you go through the rest of these, there are some changes. Again, I'm going to start just on, it's page four of the handout and what the revisions are, and as you kind of go up and down the line, what we're solving for are really cash flow issues associated, and when I say issues, I don't mean necessarily bad. What are, what are the circumstances associated with the individual tax increment districts? And for some of the districts that declined in value, we want to make sure we're setting things up for success and minimizing any real burden, say, on the general fund or any other funds for that matter, in terms of cash contributions. And the way we're doing that is we're looking at the revenue profiles and then trying to match up with expected debt service. And I won't get into the weeds on things, but we really need it to kind of look like a business transaction, right? These TIF districts are like enterprise funds. They produce revenue, and then they pay for costs, and in this case, the costs are debt service. And if I'm somebody that's going to lend you money and I look at that, I want to see how much is the revenue versus the expenditures, and I want to see some level of coverage there, right? I don't want it to be just money in, money out, and you're not really having anything kind of fall to the bottom line. We want to try to produce some positive cash flow. We also had plans around repaying the general fund. We don't want to lose sight of that. And so the donors and the transfers from the donors to some of the other districts will not only support debt service, but the intent is really to try to continue to pay down the advances from the general fund to the TIF districts, to bring cash back on the balance sheet of the general fund. And so putting all that together, this is kind of what comes out the other end. And so we already had a note anticipation note that we were anticipating associated with TID 9 specifically, because TID 9 is one of the districts that requires support from donors. And we were relying specifically on TID 3 in that regard. Again, the values come down. There's still revenue available to share. It's just less, and it's for sure going to be less for one year, and we're hoping that the value then comes back in a subsequent period because of the reasons described in Emily's memo. Some of the other districts, because of the declines in value, can't support as much in debt service, and so we need a, an interim solution, all right? And so the solution then would be to increase the size of that note anticipation note to include some of the costs for TID 7 and TID 8. The focus for these other districts has been, we have existing interim debt outstanding that matures on November 1 of this year, and to maximize what we're borrowing to take that out and put it into permanent financing. And if there's anything left over that we can't fully cash flow, then we shift that into an interim mode, and we go five years with the note anticipation note in interest only. So that structure hasn't changed, but the size has changed as we're shifting some additional dollars into that mode versus the various tax increment revenue bonds, which would be principal and interest payments over the remaining life of the TIDS. Again, we're trying to match revenue with debt service in this case, and in some of the district's cases, we want to make sure we have some positive cash flow, but TID 8 is probably the biggest challenge in that regard, and TID 9 we had already set up to be on an interim basis. So TID 7, the amount we're borrowing to refinance its respective portion of the 2022 note is the same, $839,000, and that would take out all of the portion attributable to TID 7 on that note. The capital borrowing amount, the new money, has been reduced, again, for the purposes that I described, reducing the size of the issue, which then reduces the debt service requirement, and we're putting the $224,000 of new money into an interim mode with the intention of, that something's going to have to happen with that right in the next four to five years. It's going to have to go into a permanent financing structure, but we need time to play out to some degree. We need at least one valuation period, because we know what the values are now. We need to see what they're going to be next year. TID 8 is similar, except in this case, the tax increment revenue bond for TID 8 was going to be fully focused on primarily refinancing the 2022 portion of the note anticipation note. In this case, we can't quite get there, and so we're going to do, we're going to do two things. We're going to put what we can into the note anticipation note, and then what we can't refinance, we don't, we don't want to, we can't really put it back into the new note anticipation note. I'll tell you why here in a moment. So we need to find an alternative, and I would suggest that we look at another general obligation promissory note in a smaller amount, about $280,000, to fund the rest of what is required. And why is that? A, under statute, a known anticipation note can be issued up to five years in term. You can issue it for a shorter term and even roll it over, but at no point can you go beyond five years. And so that original 2022 note, we would have three years left on it, but I don't think it really makes a lot of sense for you to issue another known anticipation note for a term with three years and then pay all the costs associated with that. There would be legal fees. We would have some fees. The GO note is relatively low cost. Everybody understands that instrument as well. If I'm a bank, I fully understand what a GO note is. It's the same pledge as the larger issue that we were talking about before, but we can also structure it how we want. And I would propose, much like a known anticipation note, it would be interest-only with a five-year balloon maturity that we would either intend to pay down over time and then get rid of it, or turn it into a longer-term amortizing structure at some point in the future, once we have a better idea of what the stabilized revenue stream for TID 8 is going to look like, inclusive of the transfers from the donor districts, some of which already exist, some of which we would have in front of you at your October meeting. And so, again, it's kind of like an overflow. Because the revenue decline, we need to find an alternative, and the revenue decline also applies, in this case, to TID 4, because its value fell as well. TID 4 already shares with TID 8. TID 10, good news. The value increased substantially, and so while we can all, while we can easily fund and pay the debt service on the new money, the capital borrowing side of about $770,000, that number's the same. There was also a short-term interim financing done in 2021 that we can essentially take out. That, that matured in 2026. At least its schedule maturity is 2026, and it's roughly $590,000. We can actually absorb that. So we can combine new money with refinancing and set that out into a long-term structure. And so now we have, one of your short-term issues will be gone. One of the interest-only balloon structures, we can now put into permanent mode. So that's, that's a positive set of news there, and so we will look to increase the size of that issue, which all in, is a good thing from your perspective. And so that's high-level detail. I'm happy to answer questions quickly before we transition into looking at how the cash flows look when you basically take all of this and you set it out and apply it to the various tax increment districts in terms of principal and interest requirements. Questions, comments?
I have some questions, Brian. So if I'm understanding this correctly, the original plan, if you totaled up all that we had on here, that was roughly $7,300, $937,000. Just totaling up your total numbers on there. On the revised one, it goes to $8,578,000, so that's like an additional $641,000, and you're saying that's coming from the change in the values, the lack of-
The, the increase is entirely related to being able to essentially take out the interim note that was issued for TID 10. So you think of increased borrowing as being potentially a bad thing. I would argue, in this case, the additional borrowing that we're talking about is really related to debt that you already have. And so we're refinancing that 2021 anticipation financing and turning it into a long-term fixed-rate permanent financing structure. So that's where the increase is coming from, and then there's some mild amount of added cost, because we're adding an issue, and one of them is increasing in size substantially as well. So in this case, we're not adding any new money, other than the refinancing piece, to the overall finance plan. That's the roughly $600,000 that you're referring to.
Okay, so that will still include the Spruce Street project as budgeted? And then this question, I don't know if you will know, or Emily, or Rod, but the last, the last assessment was in 2016. Were there any interim adjustments made to any values of property in between then and now?
No. The TID values, and I think Brian can speak to this, I think probably were overinflated in the last two years because of certain ratios that the DOR uses. It'll kind of straighten out in the next couple of years, I would think.
If there are any estimated values, or if there are any corrections, they usually, it's a two-year process. The values go down, and then you recover roughly half or more in the subsequent period, and that's, ends up being roughly your stabilized value. But I'm not going to indicate that I have full understanding of all of the details that are underlying this. Some of the stuff is technical and complex, and while I know well more than enough to be dangerous, I'm not going to proclaim to be an expert in how the state goes about applying sales ratios to assessed values, and especially when it comes to manufacturing property, it can be a bit of a black box, to be honest. So, but our, based on what investigation has been done, the expectation is that some of these values come back, and they become then the stabilized value for revenues going forward, only, only with the benefit of time when we know that for certain. And so the thinking here is to put you in a position where we don't look back a year from now and regret making decisions that aren't necessarily chiseled into granite, but certainly they would be a little more difficult to change. So the way it's set out now gives you some latitude and flexibility. The intent is to set things up prepayable anytime, especially these shorter-term issues that have balloon structures, so that you could use either cash from donor districts, or that when we have the highest level of confidence that the values have stabilized, we can set things out in a permanent financing mode and not have to wait till the end.
Any other questions for Brian?
Don't everybody jump up at once.
Brian, can you speak to the, kind of the fact of commercial properties? It's not unique to Merrill. I mean, properties throughout the United States have, commercial property has drastically gone down since the brick and mortar are going away, so to speak?
Yeah, that, that's fair. That, that didn't just materialize in the last year, though. I'd say, if you're looking at, office property is more of a new phenomenon, where you're seeing a lot of vacancies and underutilized properties in that regard. And so as a commercial property, those are the newest in the chain of going to, like, large retail and things of that nature, where there's far more online shopping. But that, that is true. That has been a trend. I don't think you probably have a lot of office property, per se, but certainly there's something going on underneath the surface that, again, you need the benefit of another valuation cycle to kind of flush all of that out and understand specifically where these values are going to settle in long-term.
Okay, I have one more question slash comment. The additional $641,000, you're saying that that's, that's looked at as a good thing because we have the ability to borrow that much more?
You've already borrowed for almost all of that, right? The debt is already issued, and it's in an interim mode where you're paying interest only, and then the balloon comes due in '26. TID 10 has enough value and revenue now to take that and turn it into a, let's pay principal and interest.
Okay.
So it's amortizing. So you're shifting from something that's going to need to be dealt with anyways, and we're putting it into a long-term financing structure now versus in the future. So, again, that's not money that you're borrowing that you hadn't borrowed for before. We're changing the structure of it in a positive way, because you're going to start to pay it down.
Okay, and, and that's good that you clarified that, because I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, the, the flip in the assessment where we're anticipating the housing assessments to go up and the commercial to go down, and people seeing this dollar value and putting all three things together and going, what in the world's going on?
All, all fair, and we're trying to figure that out, and also make decisions with the financing that need to be done within a period of time. That doesn't lend itself to complete certainty. And so trying to find the best solution, knowing that we will have a better level of visibility August of next year to see where this all shakes out. But as of right now, the plan that is discussed here, when you incorporate the notion of these additional districts acting as donors and being able to transfer funds, should give you the benefit of being able to cash flow things in the near term. Again, when we get better visibility, we can transition some of these things into longer-term structures.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm happy to go through the, the tax increment district cash flows, but I also don't want to burden people. I know it's small print as well, but you have to lay it all out in a revenue and expense profile, but I'm happy to walk you through that if you want to, if anybody wants to get into the detail. It's all set out in writing, of course, and calendar-wise, really, we'd be looking to ultimately perceive what the plan is proposed and then come back to you in October with resolutions that can be acted on, that would essentially lock everything in. So similar to the last conversation, we've kind of just shifted forward in time and recast things in a way that should make a little more logical sense, given the current values in the TIF districts and the dynamics that are at play. So ideally, we would have borrowed less on an interim basis. It is now more, but there is a reason. It is out of an abundance of caution, I would say, in terms of protecting the city's cash as it stands right now, trying to minimize any other burden on the general fund or other funds to support any of the districts.
Your Honor, do we need to revise the last resolution that we made on any of this with the dollar amounts or anything like that?
I don't believe so, right?
I don't, I don't believe so. I note that the agenda calls for authorization to proceed, and since that's on the agenda, that might be appropriate for just a motion to proceed.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to authorize Finance Director and Ellers Associates to proceed with the financing plans related to TID 7, 8, 9, and 10.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to proceed with the financing plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we have Board of Public Works.
Do you think we can consider a land parcel exchange with Remark to facilitate the trail connection and stormwater discharge? The Board of Public Works and the Parks and Recreation Commission recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve the land transfer.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the land exchange. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion carries. Number two.
Discuss and consider selling city-owned properties. The Board of Public Works recommends approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the selling of city-owned properties.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the selling of city-owned properties. Any discussion?
I have a question. Are there any minimum bids or any other sales conditions that we've included in this, or just...
We haven't yet. I know in the past, we've thrown out some minimums. Obviously, we would like to get as much as we can. We do have the right to reject any or all bids, so if they come in too low, we can reject Some of it, we have to kind of weigh out as a benefit to the city. We don't have to mow them, shovel them, you know, there's a price in some of that, get them back on the tax rolls. So I think as the bids come in, we're going to have to kind of see if it makes sense to sell them. We can put minimum bids on all of them, but it hasn't helped in the past.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to city plan.
Discuss and consider Wendorf Construction Incorporated requesting approval of a preliminary plant of Tall Pine subdivision per MMC Section 111-114, located in the City of Merrill, Lincoln County, Wisconsin, legally described in PIN number 25131061220147. The City Plan Commission recommends approval.
Motion approved.
I'll second it. Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two.
Discuss and consider Wendorf Construction Incorporated requesting the rezoning of Tall Pine subdivision located in the City of Merrill, Lincoln County, Wisconsin, from industrial to R-1 residential for the construction of single-family homes per MMC Section 113-38, with the exception of lots 29 and 30 being rezoned to thorough, fair, commercial per MMC Section 113-40, legally described in PIN number 25131061220147. The City Plan Commission recommends approval.
Make a motion to approve the rezoning.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Personnel and Finance.
Discuss and consider adding a second full-time school resource officer, an SRO. It's 100% MAP funded. The Personnel and Finance Committee recommends approval.
Make a motion to approve adding the second full-time SRO.
Yeah, I'd like to amend that motion to say that so long as it is 100% funded by the school, that we won't automatically extend that position if the school funding stops.
I would be okay with that.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
What officer number would that be, then?
23.
So you could say the authorization, the 23rd officer.
So saying the...
Well, specifically an SRO officer.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm specifically saying the second full-time SRO.
What it covers us is saying that if the SRO position goes away, also is the 23rd officer. We're not paying for that. If MAP says in a year we're done, we realize we have to cut that position or finance
Tom, do you see it that way?
I think your motion is the school full-time resource officer, the second full-time resource officer, as long as MAPs funds it.
Yeah, and there's a caveat to that. Right now, we're working through a contractual issue. We'll have to address it. So I won't even bring this agreement forward until we get that resolved. There's a layoff clause in our contract with the union that we have to exclude these positions from. So this agreement will never make the mayor's desk unless we address that. It'll be handled there.
Should it come back once it's been approved, that's been approved then?
I think we brought it here just so we can keep it on the budget track for next year, just so it's listed in there. It's going to take some time to get there anyway, but...
Because we're talking this position not being available necessarily until next school year.
Yeah.
So we're talking a year from now.
I think if we're doing good, we'll probably look at fall 2025 as absolutely having it filled, ideally. I don't think it's possible to do it earlier than that, so...
And if it's 100% funded by the school, it shouldn't affect our budget?
Our budget? None at all. We won't bring that agreement forward unless that's what it states. And I should clarify that, that's the wages benefits of the person. There are other costs that do happen, vehicles, equipment, those things we will have to absorb.
And I think us approving this shows a good faith on the city's behalf that we're working towards an agreement with the city.
And we would also get to use that officer in the summer then, when school is not in session.
Correct, yeah. So the aggregate school funding is 75% for the two positions. They fund the first position 50%, this one would be 100%, and the aggregate at 75 is a fair split for us as a city, because that's the amount of time they spend with the district.
So you just said we would cover 25% of the salary, then the city would cover it?
Of two positions.
In the aggregate, for both.
This one is 100. The current one, we only cover 50%.
Okay.
The second one will be 100%.
So overall, between the two positions, we'll cover only 25%.
So I have a motion, and I'm awaiting a second.
I'll second it if I needed to. I thought I amended it, that counted?
No.
Okay, I will second the amended motion.
Can we read the motion back real quickly, just so then...
Okay, I'm thinking this is right, because I don't know...
Yeah, just so then I know.
Okay. To approve a second full-time SRO only if it is 100% funded by MAPs.
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Placing committee reports on file.
Consider placing the following committee reports on file. Airport Commission, Library Board, Enrichment Center, Redevelopment Authority, Parks and Recreation, Transit Commission, Committee of the Whole, Marketing and Communications, Historic Preservation, Personnel and Finance, Board of Public Works, and City Plan Commission.
Motion to place those reports on file.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second to place the committee reports on file. Any discussion? I just had one correction, the Airport Commission meeting, I was present at that meeting, but I was not listed, if you could...
Oh, I'm having a bad night.
It wasn't yours.
I was going to say, that one wouldn't be your notes.
No, that wasn't yours.
Because you're at Historic Preservation at that time.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolutions?
We have a resolution honoring Kathy Unerdel for her longtime service to the City of Merrill. Whereas Kathy Unerdel has served the City of Merrill for over 21 years, from March 31, 2003 to July 31, 2024, whereas these years of service have been marked by dedication to the best interests of our community and the safety and well-being of our employees and citizens, implemented many efficiencies for our governmental operations, including the successful tax incremental financing processes. Whereas Kathy Unerdel has earned the admiration and respect of her fellow employees by the way in which she has carried out her duties, whereas Kathy Unerdel's experience will be missed at the City of Merrill. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Merrill, Wisconsin, this 10th day of September, 2024, that the Common Council and the people of Merrill officially acknowledge with deep appreciation the dedicated and faithful service Kathy Unerdel has given the City of Merrill and commend her for those 21 years of service. And be it further resolved, that we hereby commend the meritorious and dedicated service of Kathy Unerdel. Congratulate her upon the occasion of her retirement from the City of Merrill and extend our warmest wishes for her enjoyment of continued prosperity in the years that lie ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second it. Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have a resolution honoring Terry R. Akey for her longtime service to the City of Merrill. Whereas Terry Akey has served the City of Merrill at the T.B. Scott Library for over 35 years, most recently as library assistant to youth services, from April 6, 1989 to August 30, 2024, whereas these years of service have been marked by dedication to the best interests of our community and citizens. Whereas Terry has earned the admiration and respect of her fellow employees by the way in which she has carried out her duties, and whereas Terry's skills and experience will be missed at the City of Merrill, T.B. Scott Library. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Merrill, Wisconsin, this 10th day of September, 2024, that the Common Council and the people of Merrill officially acknowledge with deep appreciation the dedicated and faithful service Terry has given to the City of Merrill, T.B. Scott Library, and commend her for those 35 years of service. And be it further resolved, that we hereby commend the meritorious and dedicated service of Terry, congratulate her upon the occasion of her retirement from the City of Merrill, T.B. Scott Library, and extend our warmest wishes for her enjoyment of continued prosperity in the years that lie ahead.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have mayor's appointments.
Okay, reappoint Clyde Nelson to the Redevelopment Authority, term to expire September 1, 2029, and appoint Jim Fanoukan to the City Plan Commission, term to expire May 1, 2027.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve both appointments. One vote.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the mayor's appointments. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have mayor's communications. Fall ride is September 12 through the 15th. Please look out for extra traffic in the area. Street sign dedication for Chuck Summers is September 16 at 1 o'clock, correct?
Is it back? Is it back? Sure hope so.
We're planning on it. Gun show at the Beerman Building Expo Hall is September 13 and 14. Colorama Bike Tour is September 21st. September 21st is Merrill Fast Pitch is holding a kickball tournament at The Mark that starts at 9:00, and that's for support of Josie Geis. Fall Craft and Market at the Enrichment Center Expo Hall is September 28. And I'd like to wish Mike Rick a happy birthday today. That's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn, thank you.